All right, we're going to call the meeting to order here being 6:31. Bills and manifests are going around.
Yep.
We have no need for a non-public session. Our first order of business today is we're going to get a, have a discussion with the planning board chair, Bob Strobel? Strobel? Did I say that right? Sorry. So, welcome.
Is it on?
Is it actually on?
It's on.
It is on? Okay. Not as loud as it normally is. So, I happen to be chair of the planning board and the subcommittee of the CIP, and I will take a lot of credit for developing it. The role of the CIP is for capital projects within the town and the school to determine, not their feasibility, not whether they've passed muster or anything, but what would be the priority and the best time in terms of the overall tax impact to fund them. So, I've clarified this with both board of selectmen, planning board, and budget committee. We have no screening authority, is the way we're currently set up. So, if somebody wants to propose, the school wants to propose that we put a big, I don't know, whatever, of more, something that fits in the qualifications, $10,000 or more purchase price, a lifetime of three years or more. Let's pick something. You want to buy a bouncy house? Okay? I cannot say as a chip, as a member of the CIP, no, we don't like that. We're not going to figure out. It goes before the voters. It actually goes through the process, and that's why I'm here tonight, is that if the school departments and through the, through the school board have proposed that we, they put in $340,000 for a new roof in the timeframe of whatever year it was, 2025, I think, my job, or the job of the CIP, is to figure out what is the best means to pay for that, whether it's strictly through taxation, or we set up a capital reserve fund, three years in advance, and we put in, you know, $50,000 for three years, and then we get the bill, and then we fund the rest through a bond, or something to that effect. The goal of it is to, first of all, keep track of those, of those projects, so we know when they're going to hit, so that they're not a surprise, so that as well, the school says, okay, we're going to put, we're going to build a $50,000 bouncy house. The highway says, oh, we need a new truck, and the fire department says, oh, we need a new pumper, all in the same year, so taxes go through the roof. My job is to say, what is the priority of the bouncy house, and the fire, and the pumper, and the truck? Can we move things around so that, instead of getting half a million dollars extra funds in capital projects over one year, and then a million less the next year, because we don't have those big projects, even it out? So, the plan has been accepted by the planning board. It is a public document. I'm trying to get it up on the website, so that you have it. I'm not here to discuss the details of it. That is not the time for it. What I'm here to is to tell you how I envision, and we are planning, to fit within the existing regulatory structures of the town and the school, as far as warrant articles go. You actually have an easy, I haven't, the school gave me an easy job. I have no warrants that I need to draft for you, because your funds essentially, projects were already fit perfectly. I didn't have to make any modifications to the CIP, moving things around, because we have, you know, a little bit higher here, a little bit lower there. But the role of the CIP would be to look at the projects, if they're moved, or if they're funded over multiple years, to determine where those funds are going to be stored, draft a warrant article saying we're going to establish a capital reserve fund for the bouncy house, and fund it over three years, total cost of $85 million. We're going to put in $16 million the first year, $16 million the second year, $16 the third year, and then bond the rest. Those kinds of things. It's still your job to decide whether you would want to accept those warrants, put them on the warrant. Budget committee's job still is the same. Yes, we approve it, or we agree with it, or recommend it. No, we don't. Town staff and school staff would still have the legal responsibilities, make sure the language is correct, and all those other fun stuff. I'm just going to give you, next year probably, a draft to say, this is what's proposed in the CIP. Your job is taken care of. Okay?
So, would it have to be a warrant article, too?
It doesn't have to be a warrant article.
So, we could, something we could put in our budget?
You can put it in the budget. It is, it's also a tracking document. Although, the school roof is a good one, because I know that came up when I first moved to town. It's been replaced. We know that it is coming due. It's a matter of, and with a roof, there is, being a former general contractor, you know, there is a little bit of leeway. I could come back as, to the school board and say, well, it would really be better if we moved it a year in advance, because, well, the, the bond was a good issue. The bond for the building was paid off. That's less money in planned outlay, so if we were to have a capital project, we can move it up to take that slack without impacting taxes. Those kinds of things. Okay?
So, how would you envision us working with you, like, going forward? Should we, should we have some sort of joint meeting with the planning board, or just, you got your, come talk to us every once in a while, or should we come to you?
Uh, I will, shouldn't say "I," we, will send out a request to all the town departments and the school departments to say, please list projects that you know of that are coming up within this 10-year timeframe of $10,000 or more, or have a lifespan of three years or more. What is their priority? In that, I have to have it now. I'll give you an example. The fire department, they have their self-contained breathing apparatus, or scuba gear. That has a certification lifetime on it. It is coming up on lifetime in 2019. If it is not replaced, we are giving them unlicensed equipment. You know, that is a firm deadline. The backhoe for the highway department, it is, I don't know what its current age, I know it's several years. We could get it. We could throw, I refer to the known payment plan, or the unknown payment plan, in that, if it's on lease, or you have a loan for it, you know that you're going to be paying X thousands of dollars for five years. Once it's paid off, you're now into the unknown payment plan, because you're doing maintenance on it. You have the oil changes, you have the brake lines, but if your clutch goes suddenly, that's the unknown payment. I would rather have a known payment, but be, have the ability to say, yes, we'd like to move this forward, we'd like to move, move this back in time, we'd like to move it forward in time. Or, please consider a Christmas kind of project. Set aside $50,000, three years in a row, then you have 150 set up for a big capital outlay, instead of doing the tax impact all in one year. But that would be, trying to think of when we did it. I think we did it last fall, was the time for budgets, to look at capital improvements or capital projects coming forward. So, I'd probably get the same kind of request. The priority would be one, cost would be one, when you need it by, would be the third. And you're certainly welcome to extend beyond the timeframe of 10 years. If you know that the boiler is coming due in year 14 from now, let me know. Other aspects with it, it is still up to the proposals, proposers, school board in this case, to make their argument to the town that, hey, that we need this. My job, or CIP's job, is just to say, this is the easiest way to fund it, with the least kind of impact.
So, by going through the CIP, I guess I'm going to ask the same question that I asked at the budget committee, but in a different way, because a lot of times with our warrant articles, we'll do it with anything left over. So, I had asked that question, and you weren't sure if we could do that, but we couldn't still propose our warrants, the same way we've always done them.
I, to cut you off, I'm drafting the warrant for you to decide.
Okay.
So, if you want to change it, I'm, I'll, I'll give you recommended language, from the, from the perspective of the CIP, this is how it would work, if you want to fund it. Makes no difference whether you accept it or not. That's your right. I take, take no, I have no authority to say, you will do this. It is, that's your authority.
And I guess...
So, if you...
Whether it's funded out of surplus versus the money is raised, comes out to about the same anyway, as far as tax impact, because any surplus that we return will go into the taxes for the next year. Right?
Right. Well, it could, and it, yeah, I mean, I guess, it's just...
Right, most likely would, but yeah.
Yes.
But I think to, to extend your question out, if you decide not to accept the warrant, or accept that project, or there is no surplus for the project, then, from the CIP's perspective, it just gets pushed back another year.
Right.
Okay? Until that process repeats in fall, when you're doing budget, to say, yeah, we don't need this anymore, because we funded it from surplus, or we've met it through grant, or some other reason. If the need is gone, you don't need to, we don't need to do the project.
The CIP is going to be changing every, every year.
Exactly.
Things like that, because things will bump into each other, and you'll have to rearrange them and stuff.
Right. And we'll get a little bit closer. I know when I was doing the highway plan, you know, 10 years out, you can't predict the costs. You can get a ballpark. Within a year, you can get a pretty good idea that it's going to cost, you know, $92,000, or $9217.30. So, okay?
So, I have another question, too.
Sure.
You might not know the answer to this. So, say we have, like, the boiler on our, the CIP plan for 15 years down the road, and five years into it, and, and we've done the warrant article or something, and so there's a certain amount of money set aside. Is that what you would do for the boiler? And say our boiler goes, can you use that money at that point, or is it, like, how, I guess that's, so if you know in 10 years, the boiler's going to go, and as part of the CIP, CIP plan, you have that sort of in there, are you going to ask for that money in 15 years?
That's up to you. I would be surprised if you would have something in a CIP that would go out that long.
But I guess my question is, is like, if it's in the CIP plan, and, and it goes, or like, are, you know, we get snow, and the whole roof caved in, or something like that?
It really doesn't impact the CIP. We just write it off, because I have no money.
Okay.
It's your money. If you have money set aside for the boiler, then, and you're legally authorized to spend it, then that's your choice. Okay? I have, I have zero.
Because it's our warrant.
Because it's your warrant.
I see. Okay, that's, okay.
The, the CIP is a guiding document only.
Okay.
Okay? It has, it has no, I have no authority to spend, spend your money.
That's not how I was understanding it at first, but, okay, yes, thank you.
Yeah, no, we have zero-dollar figure, it's just to say, this is what's, has been proposed, this is the best way that we find to plant, to pay for it. Here's draft language that goes along with that plan. Have fun, to be blunt, or, or a little less serious.
Yeah.
Okay? Further questions?
Who develops the life cycle for all the equipment and all that?
That is whoever proposes it.
Oh, all right, so we're at that stage?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Nope. It's if, from the school board's perspective, at least being a school employee at another district, it would be, you know, the IT manager would say, okay, we have a lifetime of, of three years on computers, five years on a server, you know, 15 years on a, on an HVAC system, whoever the proposal is saying, that, that's what I, the information I would get. I could put on my professional hat and come back to you, and if something is way out of whack. Well, for instance, for the, the town proposed a 10-year lifec, lifetime on the new servers that were replaced, and I said, you know, that's, you can propose that, but I will tell you, from my professional opinion, that's way too long.
Yeah.
But that's me, not a CIP chair, that's me as professional. And that's the back and forth. It is, I'm trying to think of, I think we went back to the town departments three times for some clarification on priorities and purposes. So, and this would be, you would be the same way. You know, if I have questions, I'll ask. So, because obviously, I don't want to, if you have something that's due, and I'm not aware of that, and I propose it two years after the deadline, that doesn't do us much good.
I think keeping open channels of communication between us is just a great thing to do anyway.
Sure. CIP, we have a, we're a public body, and under the guise of the planning board, it just happens to be, I cover both.
Now, does the CIP, do you guys meet as a subcommittee?
Yes.
Not at planning board meetings? I'm just wondering if I want to come to one or something?
Generally not. Like, probably, once, once the warrants are out, and March meeting is done, we probably will not meet until, I would think, September.
Okay.
So, but we're publicly, we meet separately from the planning board generally. We've met, you know, like, Thursday before planning board meetings, just because it's, well, it's now me, Joe Cafrey, who's also a planning board member, and Joe Gunter, were the three who developed it.
Well, thank you for doing that. I think it's great to have the coordination between the, the school and the town, and...
Yeah. Sorry, I missed the last meeting.
No, that's, that's all right.
The deadline, the last meeting.
That's our fault, I think, yeah.
So, well, that's okay.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Strobel? Is that right, Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Right, for the purchase order, so it's up to that amount, it's not exactly that amount.
Okay. So, that's up to purchase amount, and that's what we're...
All right, can I move on to our, it's all set? Can I move on to our transportation update?
All right. Well, we've got a, actually, a few things to do tonight. We've got the routes for your approval, we've got the transportation bid, and just a brief update. We're at the point now where we've got five drivers trained, and on Monday, we're going to go back to our early start time. We've gotten that information out. We've posted the existing bus routes. Just want to remind everybody that these are still five bus routes, instead of six, so we've still got some group stops. We're trying to manage, myself, as well as Kelly Doby from Dale Transportation, trying to manage reasonable bus stops, as well as getting to the kids to school in a timely manner, and being able to turn over the time between our stops and Co. Brown's drop-off, and the same thing in the afternoon with the drop-off and the pickup at Co. Brown. So, at this point, we've got, we've got five routes. We have no substitutes at this point, so the plan that's in place, which is not a great plan, but it is the only plan that we have, since we don't have any substitutes, if somebody calls out sick, as soon as we know that, we're going to do a one-call to all the parents, let them know what bus is, is going to be tardy, and we're going to have to double up on the runs. So, that means if it's in the morning, another reason why we're trying to keep the five routes shorter, is that if we have a call out, they're going to have to drop the kids off, go immediately back out, and pick the other kids up, if, if we're down one bus. So, again, if it happens at 5:00 in the morning, I will call the building principal, and Jocelyn will get it out as soon as she can, and then we're going to get notification out as quickly as possible. If we know it in advance, then obviously, we'll let you know that, but that's, that's the plan right now. We have a sixth driver who is, hopefully, nearing completion. They're taking their, their final driving test on the 1st of December, and then there's another week to 10 days of learning the route and those types of things. So, if it's successful, that, that she has the certification on December 1st, we're hoping that by mid-December, we can get that sixth route on. If we get the sixth route on, then we're going to go back to much the same service that you're, you're familiar with in the past, a lot more door-to-door service, a lot more frequent stops, those types of things. But, again, we need to get to that sixth driver before, before we can do that. So, stay tuned on that. Again, as soon as we know, we'll let parents know, we'll try to give you a week to 10 days lead time, so we can make arrangements on that. Obviously, the bus routes will have to be readjusted slightly, and get that out as well.
Do you have any luck on the lead I sent you?
I contacted that lead, and we talked for a little bit, and then I called Kelly Doby. That was the same lady that had contacted me in August, and then kind of, so we're following through on it.
Yeah, just hopeful.
It would be nice to, I mean, ideally, I'd love to have six drivers and a substitute, so, you know, we could do that. We're still working on co-curriculars, trying to piece that together, whether it's through Dale Transportation, or two or, two or three other leads that we have in the afternoons to try to piece together the co-curricular trips in the afternoon, too. So, we've certainly made headway, and, you know, again, I've said it before, many thanks to, to the parents for, for being so flexible, for the staff, the administration in the school, for doing just an outstanding job in getting the school year off really smoothly. So, thank you very much for that.
To the kids for adjusting.
And the kids, too. Everybody's been terrific.
Still like those.
So, in front of you, you've got the existing bus routes. Basically, it's what we've been running for the last, since school opened, except now they're going to be earlier in the day. So, you'll see the first pickup is, is anywhere from 7:00 to 7:20, drop-off at school, anywhere between 7:30 and 7:45. And these are the, the five routes that we have in place, which will allow us also to have the two buses double up for Co. Brown.
Motion to approve the five bus routes.
And, and the two for Co. Brown are on the next table.
Two Co. Brown ones, the orange, red, green, blue, yellow, CB West and CB East. Yes, sorry. Motion to approve orange, red, blue, green.
As written.
What?
As written.
Huh?
Say as written.
Oh, as written. Bus routes as written.
Any discussion on that? Any board members mind if I open up to the public, in case somebody showed up and had some comments on this? Anybody have any comments on the bus routes, before we vote on these, to approve them?
Good, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving the bus routes as written?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next piece is the transportation bid. We had one transportation bid, and it was from Dale Transportation. They did put in a three-year bid that you'll, you'll see in front of you. I copied off the entire bid for you. If you'd like to see the, they did hand in a more professional one, other than the copied one that you have, so it's the same thing, but if you'd like to see that, you're more than welcome to do that. To go down the cost structure very quickly, for the 18, 19 year, the cost per elementary route is $292.50 a day, and the cost for the elementary high school run, remember that we've got two that are doubled up, is $362.50 a day. So, if we do the math out, you'll see, we need six buses for the elementary level, and that comes out to $315,900 for 180 days, and the, that means we would need to increase our line that we've presently got in the budget by $43,624. And we need, we have three buses for high school that we've budgeted in for next year, in case we need a third one. Now, this is where it gets a, a little bit different, and I'll explain. The total high school cost is the difference between the elementary run and the combination run, and that comes out to $37,800 for 180 days, which means we can decrease that line in the budget by $98,338. Now, in the past, the way it was budgeted, bid out, was per bus. So, if, if you were running six elementary buses, and I'm just picking a figure, I think it was around $43,000. Six buses for, for elementary at $43,000, and then two buses for the high school, that would be six at $43,000, and two at $43,000. And the way Dale Transportation bid that out is, they didn't count the high school buses as separate $43,000, they counted it as an extended elementary run, an extended combination run. So, in reality, it's, it's, I think, a more fair way to bid it out. It's a little deceiving when you look at, you know, the high school cost, only $37,800, that's the difference. So, we're trying to make it clean in your budget. So, understand that your elementary line is going to show an increase of $43,624, but your high school line is going to show a decrease of $98,338. So, for, for next year's bid on this, it's $54,714 decrease from what we have budgeted.
So, I just want to clear, clarify, though, because it says we need three buses at the high school level, but in the bid, it's only two buses.
Yeah, I, I talked to them about that. What it would be is, if you look at your bid, it, it has, all we would do would be to take three at the elementary rate, and three at the combination rate, instead of four and two, like it's got bid out.
Okay. So, they were fine with, I just wanted to make sure that they understood that we needed, what we needed and everything.
Right, yeah.
Okay, because I wanted to make sure, because that's not the way I would...
All that, all that would be, we would start off, because we're running two buses now at the high school, we would start off as four at the elementary, and two as a combination. So, if, if we were to add that third bus, then it would be three at the elementary, and three as a combination. It would just be the different, different pay structure. And budgeting out, that's the way we budgeted out, was, was six and three. So, we had three as a double run.
Okay.
If you don't use it, it's still in there. If you need it, it's there.
Yeah, I was thinking of whether that double run would be, make more sense to just split that evenly between the high school and elementary lines, not that it makes a big difference, but budget-wise. But then again, you know, if we want to actually look at, well, if we eliminated a high school route, what would their effect be? This is a better way of looking at that, I think.
Yeah.
Right? Because you're not going to, the elementary route's not going to go away.
Right. Because basically, for the, for the high school run, what we're, what we're in theory saying is that we're adding two hours a day...
Right, right.
...on to the, on to the bill. We're not adding another bus, like it was billed out last time, we're adding two hours.
Yep.
So, they're not giving us a bottom line, they're just saying, this is what we're going to pay per bus.
Correct.
No matter, but, and are they saying that they will be able to supply us with at least...
Yes. In the final contract, in the final contract, we'll write it as, as six and three.
Okay.
And detail that out, but yes.
Okay. So, motion to accept the...
And, well, let me just, in 1920, the, the total budget, you can see there, the total budget for the elementary is $326,959, and the total at the high school is $39,123. And then in 2021, elementary cost, $338,396, and the high school, $40,494, or $378,891. So, in the third year of this three-year contract, it's still going to be less than what you've presently got budgeted.
Well, we have budget right now, it looks to be, if I did this right, $452,038.
That's four-something, yeah.
Yeah. So, even after three years, yeah. It looks like it's going up by three and a half percent each year.
Right.
Seems a little much, but still, we're going to be able to...
Yeah, buses, and for three years.
That's true, we need drivers. We should really be paying the drivers more. So, maybe that's what that money's going towards. We can hope.
So, now, motion? Motion to accept the Dale Transportation bid as written? Or do you want me to just say the amounts?
No.
Nope.
It's fine. So, this is for a three-year, just to clarify, this is for a three-year contract?
2018, 19, 1920, and 2021 contract for a three-year contract.
Second, any discussion on this? It would be nice to have a contract.
Yes, it will.
Are we going to have one for the rest of the year, or are we just doing what we're doing for the rest of the year?
We're going to do what we're doing for the rest of the year, as, as long as, as long as we retain the drivers we have, we'll continue on the path that we're at.
Okay.
There's no...
And we've got the same bill structure for this year, too. It's, it's the cost per day, and then more for the extended route for the high school.
They have no interest in extending the contract to earlier?
I can ask them. I can, I can certainly ask them if they, if they'd be willing to put a contract in place, now that they have drivers.
Right, right.
I'll ask them.
I think that would be a good thing to save us, in case something happens, because then, really, if we run out of drivers, it's their responsibility to, to get one at that point, right?
I will ask them.
So, we could still approve the contract today, and then...
Yeah, that would be separate. That would be separate.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the contract? Any further discussion on the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. No pairs. Thank you very much. Do you have any other transportation updates at this point?
No.
All right. Thank you, the public, for your patience. We are now going to move on to open public comment. Anybody would like to take this opportunity to address the board, now is the time. A lot of people here, a lot of quiet people here. You going to go? You look like you want to talk.
About, what was it, two months ago, you guys were having a vote regarding one of your board members in regards to public comments in papers, stuff like that. Did we have anything go further on that? If that was going to be silenced, or if that was not going to be addressed, as long as it wasn't signed by the individual, were we going to pursue that any further? Because, just curious, that was, because that was about eight weeks ago?
I don't think there's any plans to go further with that. I think we've gone to...
So we dropped it?
No, we've gone to the limit of what we're able to do.
Oh, okay, all right. Just curious on that, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, any board members want to take this opportunity to address the board? No? Any other panelists? No? Okay. We will close the public comment session then, and move on to our regular business. In our packet, we have school board minutes of November 2nd, starting on page four.
Motion to approve November 2nd minutes.
I'll second that. Is any discussions or corrections on these minutes? I did notice one thing on the very last page. 574. That's the one. Yep. Yep. The three got into our the, that's all. Any other corrections? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended? All right. Aye. Motion carries? Four zero.
If you don't mind, Marge is going to be along any minute. Would you mind doing the principal's report and the superintendent's report?
I have no problem with that, if the board agrees.
That's okay.
Yeah, it's fine. Yep. All good. All right, before we go on, we don't have any non-public comments, right? Non-public minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll skip by the business administrator's report for now. Move on to the principal's report.
Good evening. Our report begins on page 75. We have an update from a couple of fundraiser and collection things that we were doing from Ellen Gibson. She noted that the toy drive for K through two recess was a great success, lots of items were donated, and that the duty staff are seeing a definite difference in the behavior of the kids and their ability to show expected behavior at recess, which is great. We raised $244.60 for United for Puerto Rico with our Hat Day, and Mrs. Engdahl expresses her appreciation for that.
Good evening, everybody. So, I got you, Gary. So Veterans Day, we had three, yeah, three parents from, four, three or four?
Three parents, one staff, sorry.
Yeah, so we had three, three and one, three people from the community came in and talked to our classrooms on Veterans Day, which is fantastic. One of them, and then the one person that was not a parent was Steve Robert, so he was talking as well. And then they, everybody that participated also joined us for lunch, which is fantastic. Then we have a picture of them in our hallway. I did reach out to the VFW, they didn't have enough time, so I said, my apologies, we'll definitely get you next time then. But it was a great turnout, it was fantastic. Thank you to Linda McDonald and Nicole Billcliff. They did a lot of the heavy lifting on that and scheduling it all. Maybe next time we'll have Shane Wells as well.
Next up.
Putting that out there. So, yeah, it was great, it was a great turnout.
Student Council provided an update regarding the adopted classroom of the school in Texas that was affected by Hurricane Harvey. They collected several boxes of supplies, and this update is a little dated, so those supplies have already been shipped. And I believe the next event is to try to organize a Skype meeting of the classes, so we will likely provide an additional update on that. Are you talking about sports awards?
Sports awards went well. We had a great show, we had a great turnout. All the teams that were kind of acknowledged, that great, I mean, both teams made it to the playoffs, the girls made it to the championship game, and cross-country did a great job with a smaller team, but they still gave it their all, so it was a good turnout overall for the fall sports.
We are looking for the board's guidance in terms of how to handle the gym light situation. We have included in next year's budget, at this point anyway, funding to replace all of the lights. One of them has gone, it could be a sign that others are on their way as well. It's not, the light that's out now is not a huge deal, it's a corner light, so it's not going to substantially affect visibility in basketball or whatever. So we could leave it as is, or we could fix it for about $300, but we'd also like to know what the board would like to do moving forward if additional lights were to go out.
Aren't those replaced? No, I mean, so what, not like recently, but not too long ago, we changed those lights from cadence to whatever, more energy efficient, whatever.
Was that just the bulbs, or was that actually a picture?
I think it was the bulbs, maybe? I don't know.
I assume that $300 isn't just a bulb being burned out.
So you have to rent a lift to get, so that includes sort of the cost of all of the equipment needed to get the light functioning again.
So it could just be a burnt-out bulb?
Yeah.
Can we just get some more information on when the last time they were replaced?
I would go with replacing it anyways, but, I mean, and Tim's not here to say this, but I know last time that we needed a lift, he was able to help out with that. I'm not sure where he's at with things like that, but I know he's been able to help out in the past with, money-wise, with, you know, helping out getting a lift somehow.
Yeah, I got like donated, but...
Yeah, yeah, so that would be just something else to think about. I don't, I'm not saying that he can definitely or anything like that, I just know that he has been able to in the past, so if we could ask him to, but I just think liability-wise, we, even if it is in the corner and it doesn't have anything to do with anything, that we're probably better off replacing it than to let it go, because if something happens, lawyers will look at that and say, well, you had a light out, so.
Yeah, either way, for $300, I would recommend we move forward with it and get it fixed.
Yeah.
But ask Tom when the last time they were replaced and figure out, and what would be the total cost if we had to?
And if we're going to have to rent the lift, he might as well look at the rest of them, I guess, at the same time, and then maybe come back with a total cost for the next time in two weeks or something. You know, look at, look at the rest of them if they're thinking more are going to go. Why pay $300 for the lift and then a week later have to pay $300?
No, I'm just saying that, I mean, looking at, you can't really, I don't know, I don't know if you can tell anything by looking at a light bulb, whether it's going to go soon or not.
Well, no, but if we know when we replace them all or whatever, two.
Yeah, that's true. If there's some other ones that could be replaced at the same time, some older ones. Yeah. You know light bulbs, they're weird. They just come and go, you know?
But I just hate to think of having to spend $300, you know, or $250 or whatever for a lift and then two weeks later.
Well, all the other options to not, to just wait and do it over the summer, right? If we're going to replace them all over the summer anyway. But that's, that is a long ways away, and it's not big money. If we get a, if we get a donated lift, it'd be even less, I'd imagine, so.
So nothing for now, come back with more information in two weeks?
Sound good?
Next on the list is the One Call Now alternative. I do want to preface this by saying that Steve has been in contact with One Call Now and found out that there were some coding issues, and that is all I know about that, that affected, that likely affected the fact that some people were getting some calls and not all calls, and as far as they're concerned, that has been fixed. And so he's anticipating moving forward that we will not continue to have those glitches. He did provide a comparison of some alternatives. I know the one that Co-Brown uses had been mentioned at the last meeting. Unfortunately, that is not a standalone notification system, you have to purchase their student information system, so it would replace One Call Now and MMS. There's another option called K-12 Alert that's cheaper, but does not integrate with an existing student information system, so you basically have to figure out how to get all the contact information into it. And then he has a couple others that are more expensive. So he identified pros, cons, and miscellaneous info, and his recommendation is to stay with One Call this year, but contact K-12 Alert in the spring and do a more specific comparison that would not affect the budget, because K-12 is cheaper. And then we can also certainly try to monitor how One Call Now is working between now and the end of the year.
What's SIS?
Student Information System.
So do we pay separately for MMS then?
Yes.
Also?
Yep.
And just out of curiosity, is there a big difference between, like, the One Call Now, MMS, and then if we went to, like, Infinite Campus?
I don't know the cost difference between Infinite Campus and MMS. I imagine that it is much more. I don't have a specific number. I know that he is not a fan of Infinite Campus in general, their SIS system, so, but I can find out more about that.
As we're talking about One Call Now, just unrelated, but do you plan on putting out another?
Yep, tomorrow.
Notification, great.
Just in case.
Next on the list, Deerfield Fair gives us sort of a commission for entering student work into the fair, so this year they sent us a check for $267. That money typically goes into the student activities account to be used for art supplies, and so we are requesting board's approval to make that deposit.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye.
Eighth grade trip is in process. Mrs. Clemmons, the eighth grade advisor, has given me three quotes that I'm currently reviewing, and I will have a recommendation for which vendor to use for the trip to Washington, DC at the next meeting. Related to that, the eighth grade is asking for approval for an additional fundraiser, and I am passing that information around now. They are looking to offer a Parents Night Out service on Saturday, December 15th, from 5:00 to 9:00. Parents could pay to drop off their kids, who would be fed and entertained for that time, so parents could go out and do some holiday shopping or whatnot. Fees would be $25 for the first child and a family rate of $40. They, all volunteers will be approved. Co-Brown has approved the use of their gym. They have a emergency form on the back for your review. And so they are looking for your approval to hold this fundraiser.
There's no money for later hours?
Motion to approve the December 15th Parent Night Out fundraiser for the eighth grade.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, motion passes.
And I believe that is all we have for you.
All right, do we have any questions from Ms. Young? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the enrollment report.
You've got your enrollment report in there, you can see total from this month as well as last month. Do you have any questions?
We're at 380 now, I mean, we were at 364, I think, at the beginning of the year. What, is it just generally all over, or is it just one class mostly, or?
It's across the board.
Across the board.
I'd just like to point out under grade six, Ms. Beck told 10th, as five is 15th.
Yes, it is. I have to last minute.
All right, you want me to move on to personnel? Yeah. On page 80, you'll see the personnel report. First one is Ann Markey, off-site Title I tutor. This is Title I services that were required to do off-site at Sacred Heart for one of our students. $18.99 an hour, one hour a week.
Motion to approve Ann Markey for off-site Title I tutor.
Second, any discussion on this? Is this coming up Title I money, I assume?
Yes.
One hour a week.
That's what the services are, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Next is Mark Blad, nomination for boys B basketball coach.
I just want to stipend and why is the nomination?
I believe the nomination is the new position, and the stipend is the continuing position.
I think we have to nominate those every year, though.
I think he was already nominated last.
Yeah, boys A was already done and approved. I'm not sure why that's listed as a...
I think it's just identified.
Okay. Motion to approve Mark Blad, $1,200 for boys B basketball coach.
Second, any discussion on this? So he's coaching both the A and the B teams? There's, that's kind of works out for that?
They have separate practice times.
With the boys B team, do they play games against other towns? And those aren't going to conflict?
Usually, they go together, so...
Oh, so it's like JV and V, but they'll play at the same time? Gotcha, okay. That makes sense then. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And also on page 80, informational stipends, Mark Blad, boys A basketball, Lee Cronin, building leadership team, Julie Doran, building leadership team, Dana Kelly, leadership team, Ellen Gibson, leadership team, Nicole Billcliff, leadership team, Sarah Hashem, leadership team, Louise King, building leadership team, Linda McDonald, building leadership team, Lauren Dow, building leadership team, and Louise King, standards-based report card development. So those are informational stipends.
Can I just ask a question? Why did she...
Because they did not start until the second quarter.
And the only other thing I have under my report is just a reminder that we're running payroll next week. We've got a short week, so Missy's trying to get the payroll done, and hopefully have it ready for you to sign on Tuesday or earlier. So as soon as that's done on Monday, we'll shoot you out an email, give you a phone call, and if we could get a couple of people to come in and sign that, that'd be great.
I'll be around.
And that's all I have. Jump back to financials if you'd like.
Before we do that, does anybody have any questions for superintendent?
Thanksgiving? I'm just kidding.
I guess we have some more stuff in here for the tractor.
Yeah. Well, I handed out, you wanted some information on a couple of different things. You've got the tractor there, you've got the information on the steps, and then some other information on the corridor lockers as well. I know there was some discussion about whether you wanted to do those out of the existing budget, or how you wanted to approach that, so that's additional information.
The tractor and stuff?
And my other note says that the lockers, the total comes to $23,000. What's that?
That's less than what we thought it was, wasn't it? Wasn't it 30?
I think so, originally.
What? It was 26 or 28.
It's 23 if we do it this calendar year, and we can, let me see this, if they need to be installed during Christmas vacation, the company needs to know soon. If the lockers are ordered before the end of... If the lockers are ordered before the end of the calendar year to be installed in February, April, they'll hold to the price. If not, the price increases to $26,000. Has anybody seen these lockers?
There's a picture of them.
Kinda. No rust bumps. That's good. The ones that are there, rusted out.
Yeah, I know. Some of those came out awful. We were just going off the copies that we had.
Black, that's a picture?
Get a good.
Well, there's one here, too. Not much better.
Get a good view of that.
Solid locker.
We're just going off the information that we had given us, so.
So, well. 2018 delivery.
So, is this something we want to, agenda for December, our first December meeting?
Oh, and then do it during February break, you mean? Because we at first said that it should be something done over winter break, didn't we?
Well, there's a few options still. We never really decided what we're going to do with this. Are we gonna?
Should this go to the start, or prior to October? Oh, yeah, that's what we guys.
Use our capital reserve, put it in our budget for next year, you know, just do it now. I mean, we never really decided any of those things, so that's something that we need to do. But having a bid, obviously, is a prerequisite to all that, probably, so.
If I remember correctly, the discussion was that you were going to take it out of this year's budget. I mean, out of the budget that we're developing for next year, take it out of that. And then you were deciding whether you wanted it out of this year's budget or out of the capital reserve.
Right.
Discussion that I remember.
Yeah.
So, these are 15 by 15 by 36 inches high. And you're putting two on top of each other? So, a total of 136. Is that how many we have now?
I don't know exactly. I would say.
That's enough, though? I mean, and are they like equivalent to what we have?
Yes, as far as I know.
How many empty ones do we have, do you?
Off the top of my head.
And which students, just sixth, seventh, and eighth using?
Seventh and eighth would use these lockers.
Seventh and eighth.
So, what about the sixth grade hallway?
Those lockers are in good shape, are decent shape.
That's the one I saw rusted out, bottom of my son's. It's pretty rusted out, you know?
So, it's 83 students, if I'm looking at your enrollment.
We're buying 136 lockers for 83 students? I'm just asking.
We're replacing what's up there and filling that space, and, you know, enrollment could fluctuate.
Right, I mean, it looks like it goes up over 90, 95. In a couple of years, we'll be, I mean, if everybody moves up and the numbers stay the same.
How many 100?
What's that?
So, we're not replacing, I thought we were replacing all of them there. So, it's just the seventh and eighth grade hallway?
Yes. So, it's the board's pleasure on this. Make a decision, put it on the agenda for next week, for next meeting?
I guess I would like to put it on the agenda for next week, next meeting, but I really was ready to, until a few things came out. I mean, I'd like to get the lockers. I'm starting to wonder, so, if you look at the glass sizes, right now, we're averaging somewhere in the 40s, low 40s, I don't know.
Mid 40s.
Let's say 50. So, that's, we would only need, if enrollment increased, and I don't see that happening, but if it did, that would mean we need 100. It almost seems, and I would, I hate to bring this up at this point, that we really should see about 100. And then, what do we need for the sixth grade lockers? And see, could we get enough lockers for everybody for somewheres around this price? I mean, I honestly don't see, and if I'm wrong, in a couple of years, the board could order some more.
Well, and the, well, fifth and sixth grade in that whole hallway, I mean, I don't know how many are all of those used, too, because those classrooms.
I don't know. I think we need to buy lockers to the amount of students we reasonably have. I mean, that's, I mean, we used to have, if you look, there's a couple of classes, not next year, but the year after and the year after, coming out of Co-Brown, that are in the 70s. And we have classes that are in the 40s.
That's just this year, isn't it? That's the 70s.
Next year, I think the eighth graders are about the same, if not exactly the same, as the amount of 12th graders leaving Co-Brown. But the two years after that, they're big classes. We used to have those big classes. They're in the 70s. I don't have a report in front of me, you guys do. But I'm just saying, we should be buying lockers for.
Yeah, 75.
A projected use of them. And then, if something comes up and we need to buy some more, we can always do that. So, if you went sixth, seventh, and eighth, how many kids in those three classes?
93, 120, about 130.
So, in this, we have enough, if we did them a little differently, for the three classes that use lockers. We have 136 here, and we have three 40s or about 120. If we said three 50s, that's 150. I'd rather buy a few more and put some in the sixth grade hallway and have enough in the seventh and eighth hallway. I mean, that's the way I would think about it, but.
Well, then you're looking at, I'm just saying, but then you're looking at, you're pulling out lockers, you're doing whatever, then we're going to have to paint and all that other stuff, too. It's, we're not going to leave there.
That makes more sense than buying, in my opinion, that makes more sense than replacing whatever the number of lockers we have, 136, with 136 when we only need 100.
We could count maybe for the next time as to how many exactly we have in the sixth, I mean, the seventh and eighth and in the sixth hallway.
Well, I'd want Tom to double-check the sixth hallway, too, because if those lockers are still in good shape, I'd hate to be replacing them just to replace.
And I agree with that. I'm just listening to Ms. Hartford, who said that.
Right, yeah, if they're rotting through, then by all means, yeah.
And I don't think we want rusted-out lockers in the school.
I agree.
My son had one, my now ninth grader had one in the same area in sixth grade, and it was the same thing. It was rusting out on the bottom, too.
Well, I think we should look at that. I'm absolutely personally not against the lockers coming out of our building fund. It's just, we should buy the lockers that we need and put them where we need them.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I just want to direct a question towards Jocelyn. When you do the further research, I'm not sure if part of this equation, if they only sell them in like 68 units, and that might be part of the problem. Like, I'm not sure how they actually break down their lockers. They may break them down by so many units. So, that might be something that's coming into play, so, just another thing.
While we're on this, did we get any research on the capital reserve fund, the wording?
We tried to check into the wording on the capital reserve, and it really, as far back as we could go, it just says for capital improvements. It doesn't say big, small. It doesn't say lockers or roofs. It just says for capital improvements.
Which, in my opinion, this is. It's like a roof is, you know? I think this falls well within that.
Okay, so, we'll get a little bit more information and put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Can I, if it's possible, maybe a little bit better of a picture? I don't know if it's possible.
We can Google it online. Picture's not good.
I'll see what I can get from Tom.
So, I guess that's a question, too, is like, because the ones in the fifth, sixth hallway are the above and below. So, if that's what we're doing for.
We're not doing, we're doing it like that. We're doing it 36 tall. It'll be more like that, but not that shape.
Will all of those fit in the sixth grade hallway enough for all of the kids, too? I mean, I don't know, because I know right now they're above and below.
All right, do we have any other questions for Dr. Gouty? Anything else? Do you all say?
Was that the only thing? You didn't want anything on the other two?
Well, that's up to you.
The concrete.
The tractor and the stairs.
Yeah, the tractor and the stairs.
That's up, that's up to you.
I don't remember the discussion on the tractor. This was just that because it was coming up on Charlie's list so much, or we were paying Charlie so much and.
Yeah, the conversation came up on the tractor. Do we need a new one? Are we spending too much to fix it? How old is it, the whole nine yards? And we got, we got an estimate for a new tractor. And again, the discussion that I recall was, we're not putting it into our budget preparation for next year, but the discussion would be more around, are we going to take it out of capital, well, that's not a capital improvement. Are we going to, are we going to do a warrant article, or are we going to try to find it in this year? So, just got you more information on that. The concrete steps, the note I have is, the prices are good until spring and include replacing both steps, both sets of stairs, not just repairing them. He needs three days to complete the work, possibly Christmas, February, or April vacation if weather permits.
So, is there only one bid for this, or is there?
I believe we have one bid for the tractor and one bid. The note also says here, if you want to move forward of the tractor, obviously, we'll get, we'll get more quotes on the tractor, but I believe that's all the bids he got for the concrete at this point.
I'm a little surprised at the tractor. I thought we had put that to bed and we were sticking with our tractor for a few more years. Regarding the steps front and the steps in the back, I'm all in favor of doing those. I personally have found, doing concrete work in the winter, they have to add calcium to the concrete, which weakens it, and I don't think it'll be as good. So, I personally think we should go with the guy. I'm fine with that for April vacation.
Well, then, it says in here, too, though, if existing rails cannot be reused, new rails to be provided by the school at their cost, which is fine, except for, I think we need to know how much more on top of this it's going to cost us, if these rails cannot.
Those rails, I mean, they need paint, but they're fine.
Well, are they going to be fine once he gets in there and takes them out, though?
I would think so, but rails are very minor cost. I don't expect the rails to be. I would say $1,000 would be outlandish. But if we wanted to get somebody to find that out, that's fine, but, and those are safety issues. Unfortunately, as I was coming in the door late, it was snowing, so, it's that time of year.
And again, it says the prices are good until the spring, so if you want to revisit it, I can put it down in February or March and revisit it again instead of doing the work in the winter.
And that certainly is a possibility. My concern is that, you know, I would like to, you know, in the spring, everybody has jobs. They're, you know, I would kind of like to tie it up. I do think these are safety issues and we need to get them fixed, so, my personal preference would be to tie the guy up, to have it done in our April vacation.
What do we want to do, then? Because not only, if we're going to decide this, we have to decide where the money is going to come from as well.
What I would like to do is go over the financials first.
We could do that, and then come back to it.
Cover it back to it.
Won't we at least, at least make a note to put this somewhere, either in our.
Parking lot item?
Parking lot items for now, or in our agenda for next week, just so that it doesn't get lost if we don't come back to it after our financials.
And the tractor?
I think the information was good. I don't think anybody's.
So, just.
Something to, you know what, as we go forward, we'll have to keep in mind that if we ever think about how much, think about getting a new tractor, this is the type of cost we'll be looking at. I'm not dealing on that. Okay, so, we're all set with that. I think we can circle back to our business administrator's report.
Begins on page 18. Enclosed in your financials, you have your current revenue report, now that the tax rate has been set, your expenditure report following that, and then we'll move on into the budget.
Do we have any questions on our current financials? Anything interesting to note?
I don't have anything interesting to note.
Okay.
For the fact that I've been looking at your financials, making sure that there's nothing sticking out, but mostly focusing on the budget at this point, and your estimated tax impact from the information we got yesterday.
It's still early in the year, anyway. All right, so, budget, then?
And obviously, with the stipends that you just approved tonight, those are not in here, so once we receive the stipend forms down at the SAU, those should be in there by the time you receive these next month. So, right now, your current bottom line for total unexpended funds is $563,000. Okay, any questions on the financials? Okay. Page 29, I updated the tally that I've been keeping track of that is telling you what we changed since the last meeting. Your regular ed teacher salaries, that changed by $2,000 due to an intent to retire and a track change for next year. And coinciding with that is your FICA and retirement lines as well. Special education contracted services, elementary, PT amount changed per a conversation that Scott Ruining had at the last meeting. Guidance salaries, there's a track change. Then you'll have the FICA and retirement following that. Criminal background checks, we increased that, I believe, at the last board meeting. Your principal and assistant principal salary line, again, changed from the last board meeting. Then your FICA and retirement. Facilities, same thing for your director. And FICA retirement continues on page 30. You approved the bid at the last meeting, so that propane has now increased $170. Tuition, other public schools, high school, I believe Mr. Ruining noted to you last week that we could change that, decrease that down to a dollar. And your speech therapy, high school, we received updated information on November 3rd for that. So, a total decrease on your budget from two weeks ago of $8,525. And with that, I assume we'll be making more changes tonight.
Good guess.
We have a number of lines that need to be adjusted, transportation being one of them. So, if it's okay, I'll take you through page by page, and if you have any questions, please jump in, and we're going to identify the changes that need to occur.
Co-Brown tuition. Yes, big time. No.
Again, I'm going to go, we've already gone through this pretty much line by line, page by page, so if you need me to slow down, just let me know. Page one is the teacher salaries and corresponding benefits. Anything on page one, Marjorie, that we talked about?
I did have a note, a follow-up from the last meeting. Tim was asking about the retirement. So, you had two wave, two waves, I'm calling them, of retirees. The first wave ended this July 2017. You had three regular ed teachers that were $35,000 a year, and three special ed teachers around $35,000 a year, just in salaries. And then, your second wave is going to end in July 20th, 2019, so that will be for fiscal year 1920. And the cost for those was for regular ed only for a. And the cost for those was for regular ed only, for 45.5. So, that's why, looking at your budget, you're seeing a decrease in the special ed salaries, but you're not so much seeing one in your regular ed. Not to mention that you only have four special ed teachers, but you have 20-something in your regular ed line. And those people, as they make track changes and stuff like that, so that's going to increase, and then you take the decrease off as well. So, you're not seeing it as much in the regular ed.
Anything else on page one?
The health insurance, or do not exceed, what was it? Oh, decrease, never mind. I thought it said increase.
Yeah, the health insurance throughout the budget, the insurance rates came in at minus 2.4%. Remember, this is a snapshot in time of what the existing people are taking for plans. So, that could change with life-changing events, marriages, having kids, whatever it may be, so... But it isn't minus 2.4.
Yeah, I just read it as increase, so I was wondering.
You might have been looking at the dental, because the dental is a 2.3 increase.
Yes, I was.
That hung me up earlier today. I thought it was a mistake as well, and then I caught it.
Okay, so, but these numbers aren't completely with the latest.
Correct.
Does the dental, do they figure out the dental the same way they do the medical? It goes by usage?
I think it does, but I don't think dental is used as much. I've noticed that typically if somebody's taking the buyout in this district, they don't tend to take your dental insurance as well. But I don't know if it's a perception that they can't have it, but we try to make them know when they do come in and sign up for paperwork that even though you're taking the health insurance buyout, you still are entitled to the dental insurance. It doesn't affect that. You know, and then sometimes you have somebody that will have a single plan, and their spouse will have the dental plan. But yes, typically it goes hand in hand, but that rate has not actually increased in, I want to say, at least three or four years.
Yeah, it's usually pretty stable.
Yeah. And even though it says 2.3, I think it was like maybe a dollar something a month.
Page two, you've got your unemployment, your workman's comp, and then moving into your supply lines. I don't believe we had anything on page two. Page three continues your supplies. Ending the page with textbooks. I don't believe we had any changes on page three. Page four, textbooks, new equipment, and starting your special education. Anything on four? On page five, continuing your special education, down at the bottom of page five, again, that's the preschool number that we can't do tonight. That's determined by the joint board on November 27th. So, that's one of the numbers that we're going to have to change later on when that's set.
That was pretty close, though, wasn't it?
It should be pretty close. Is the number as it stands right now when it was proposed by the...
No.
Is that the existing number?
That is what we originally budgeted for, but there were some changes after a meeting with Scott. I don't remember what those are. I do apologize. I calculated them last week to advertise for the public hearing.
It should be a fairly close number, but that's to be determined at the meeting.
It's going to be lower, I do believe, yeah. It will be decreasing.
Page six, continuing your special education. Ending with co-curricular salaries at the end of the page. I don't believe we had anything on page six. Page seven is the remainder of your co-curriculars, starting on your athletic stipends. It's the same as we went over last time. Page eight, summer school, thrown officer, and guidance at the end of that page, starting with these guidance salaries and corresponding benefits. Again, no changes there. Page nine continues your guidance and moves into your nurse, your health areas. Page 10, continues your end of your nursing areas, and then your contracted service, ESL, as well as speech. Ending the page, starting your improvement instruction, your curriculum development stipends. Nothing to highlight on that page. Page 11, continues your improvement of instruction, moves into your curriculum director position, corresponding benefits. Page 12, continues your curriculum director, instructional staff's training, and your media, your library services. Page 13, continues your library. And ends the page, starting your technology director. Page 14 is your technology. Computer software, all is listed on the next page. That's why that big open blank space there bumped it to the next page. Got all your computer software, supplies, technology, equipment, replace equipment, technology on page 15. Again, no changes to report on that page. Page 16 is the end of your technology services, as well as the school board services, starting in the corresponding lines for school board. The adjustments were identified at the last meeting. Page 17, end of school board services, SAU expenses, again, that's a number that will change. That's going to be set on November 27 by the joint board, so that number will have to be updated at a later time. Moving into the office of the principal to finish off page 17.
Can it just, just as a... So that if I goes to budget committee under principal salary and assistant, say, up to 5%?
Should it say all the way, all those should be up to?
I think most of them did.
Did they?
Yeah. I just caught those two. I think the rest of them did, but I just haven't catched those two, just so that if I go to budget committee.
That one was me, and that's directed to.
And taxes, director.
Technology.
I thought they did. They didn't?
Nope.
Okay. No, they all should, I agree with that.
Something's at up to 5%, because I saw it a couple of times at the beginning.
That was the...
Maybe the notes.
No, up to 5% was for the principal and assistant principal.
That's here, though.
I think it was in the note sheet that Marjorie did before we started the budget.
Oh, yes, that's what it was, yeah, okay. I was like, I know, I saw it somewhere. But yeah, all of those, sorry.
Page 18 is continuation of the office of the principal. Page 19 is the start of your facilities. And the note under the facilities director will be updated.
Yes.
So, are we on page 19?
Yep.
All right, so we've got under building maintenance. We got, we talked about early about finding a cost to replace gym lights. We have that? $7,500? Okay. Well, are we going to table that until we find, I'm confused, because we just talked about that, replacing that one for $300, then we said, well, we get a cost for everything.
Well, I think that, I think this is replacing all of the gym lights, and that would basically be replacing a bulb.
These are replacing all the fixtures and all that, too, I imagine, right? But did you write down for notes on that, for the lights?
I didn't.
You asked when the bulbs were last replaced.
Tim, do you remember when the last time the gym lights were replaced? Didn't we just do those, like, five, six years ago? Has it been longer than that?
I don't remember the gym lights being replaced.
I don't recall.
I'm not saying they weren't, but I don't remember they were. That would be a pretty good size expense.
Are you talking about the fixtures and everything?
No, like, the bulbs.
It was just the bulbs that were changed from energy efficient. I don't remember doing that.
You're talking the new gym, right?
Yeah.
I don't... Tom would probably have that.
Can we just clarify? I'm pretty sure it is to replace the whole fixtures, but just to make sure, if it's not...
How would we replace the whole fixture?
I don't know. Some of them, I would look confused. There's more information of why we need to replace the gym lights, $7,500.
Okay.
And they're not that old.
Okay. So, I assume on under building maintenance, that note, they originally budgeted $8,600. I mean, that's great for us, but that's not going to be in the final proposal, right? Okay, we'll take that out.
We'll take that out.
I don't mind having it in there for now, I just don't want to go into the budget committee with that necessarily in there.
Yeah, I only left the note in there because I'm saying we originally budgeted for it, but we removed it to take it out of the capital reserve, so I can take that out. It was just me trying to keep track of, because sometimes we put things in and take them out and put them back in, and so I just wanted to make sure we were definitely doing it before I did it.
On page 20, more of your facilities operation. You've got a decision to make on fuel oil. Right now, we've got the existing budgeted amount of $46,800. We're being told that because there's an additional additive that's going into the oil for next year, that they're not ready to bid that out. It could be, they're not giving us a firm date, three weeks, four weeks, something like that to get the bid. We tried to ask them, you know, what should we do for budgeting purposes? And they told, Ryan's told us that he would recommend budgeting about $2.50 a gallon.
Holy cow, that's a lot more than we did.
So, you know, that would bring that figure to $55,000. I think it would be a more accurate place marker in your budget.
What's for an additive that's getting added? A required additive?
It's a new requirement.
Yeah.
Probably be as good as MTBE or whatever.
I don't know what it is, but they're saying they can't bid it out yet because there's a new additive that's going into the heating oil for the, what would that be? The 18, 19 year.
Correct.
It's like something that Doug's mandating.
I assume so.
Just for the offload.
That'd be great.
It'd be very clean.
I should know if there's some equipment thing, or, you know, if we needed it because of old equipment, or...
We asked that question, and they said, no, it's not going to affect any equipment, but...
I mean, gas, oil's what, anywhere from $2 to $2.20?
I mean, that's going to affect a lot of people in town, too. It's going to affect everybody who's buying oil, you know?
So, I guess, yeah, put it in at the $2.50 for now. And if it comes back before, we have to send it to the committee.
Yeah, we're going to bid it out, and if it comes back, then you're going to have to make a decision. Do you want to take that bid, or do you want to roll the dice and just put a number in your budget and bid it out next summer and hope it comes down? That's, you know, ultimately, that's up to you. It always makes me nervous, because if we hit a spike, then it's not in your budget. So, do you want, do you want us to do 22,000 gallons at $2.50 would be $55,000?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
Hopefully we get a bid back before then.
Yeah. Okay. We'll put that in the budget then.
To at least hold it.
Yeah, just as a, it's a place marker, basically, right now. All right, anything else on 20?
There's the same note with replacement of equipment there. The original, originally budgeted for replace.
Yeah, we can take that one out.
I don't mind if it's in there for the next few times, but just remember to take it out at the end.
On page 21, ending your grounds maintenance, fire alarm, water testing, and then moving into the transportation. So, the transportation number, obviously, is one that we need to change. So, now, the elementary transportation number, that's right, right here. Would be 315-900.
What line are you on?
Elementary school transportation.
The bottom of 21.
So, it says 272,000, 276, now, that's going to be 315-900. Any other questions on 21?
Trying to figure out why that's so much higher than before.
Because the...
You're going to be seeing the decrease in your high school line.
I understand that, but like...
I did like that, I don't know if anybody else read parts of the proposal, but they do have cameras on every one of their buses.
Okay, I know I was confused, because I did the whole cost divided by the number of runs and got the same, it was like 42, high 42,000, which is about the same, is what we've done in past years. So, that's what I was trying to figure out. We're still doing six or seven runs here, but really, the elementary runs are more expensive this year. They're 52,000, 650.
See, it's hard, it's hard to compare apples to apples, because this is basically an hourly route, and before you were getting charged per bus, and actually doubling up on one bus.
Yeah.
Two buses.
Okay, yeah.
So, it does look like your elementary is taking a hit, but you've got a corresponding savings in the high school, so...
That makes sense, yeah. I'm just trying to figure out the math.
So, the athletic transportation, do we need to change that at all accordingly? I didn't even think of that. I just now when I started there.
That's what it is. There's that for hourly as well, in the contract.
Yes. Anything we should do with the athletic transportation?
Extracurricular trips per hour and per mile.
So, there's an estimated number of 32 away athletic contests. So, and it's a minimum of $90 per trip. I mean, I don't even know how you figure that out, because then you'd have to look at where places were and then do the mileage and all of that, but...
Right.
What's the rate per mile?
Well, the rate per mile's...
$2.40.
Right.
And 27...
50 per hour.
27.50 for wait times.
And she was charging $200, that's about right.
I guess it depends on where you're going.
I mean, five would probably be Pembroke, but...
I'm a middle school team, so I don't know where the farthest is. How far is that?
It's not that far, but it's the farthest way.
About an hour.
But the buses have to wait throughout the whole game, too, right? So, we're paying for the whole time period.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to pay downtime there at $27.50. So, if you've got two hours of wait time per...
Two, say, three hours of travel.
Three hours. So that's $75 plus mileage.
Mileage is about 30 miles at most, 30, 50 miles.
So 200 is probably pretty close.
Yeah, it might even be a little cheaper than 200, I think.
It's pretty close, so that's.
We have enough in that line for our trips.
I get about 220 for what we just said. Okay, you said $75 minimum?
90.
90. Plus another, 235.
No, 90's a minimum.
But 90 is, is 3.27 hours.
It's not on top of that.
It's just if we don't, if we'll get plus of five minutes to go one mile.
That's why you do my math for me.
Yeah, we're at.
Come on!
Yeah, we're about 150 bucks.
And that's the worst case.
Marjorie's doing my math.
Probably pretty close. I mean, we'll have to keep an eye on that, but.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's a, that's a, that's a good point.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Anything else on 22?
So what would $1,200 get us for class trips? Did we have that there? Two trips?
If it's like an eight hour.
Depending on where you're going, yeah.
Yeah. That's only gonna get us two trips?
Well. Depends if the bus can come home. If it's far away, probably not, right, so.
It depends.
I mean, depending on what you're using it for. I mean, you could allocate so much money per class, you know, and then, you know, at least that would help them with each class, you know what I mean? I'm just.
Does their, I know that with the old, whatever you call it.
Transportation?
Yeah, we had to use their buses for class trips. Does it stayed in here? Again, I didn't read this word for word. Does it stay in here that we have to use their bus company? Like if we found, if a teacher found something cheaper, can they use it?
Well, we haven't finalized the contract yet, but.
Okay, I'm just thinking.
But what we'll do from here, you've approved, you've approved this, so we will develop a contract with them outlining everything and then I'll bring the contract back for your approval.
I skimmed over stuff.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing anything like that.
This was, this was like 72 pages long. I didn't.
And the other thing, if in the contract, we could just say we'd negotiate with them per trip too.
Yeah, we could.
For that.
I just hate to think that we, you know, put that money in there and then there's only two trips.
Yeah, $1,200 isn't gonna get you a lot of trips, no.
No, but I just, it, it's better than zero. Which was there.
Yeah.
So, I guess it's a start.
It, it does make sense that field trips might be a different rate as well because, you know, it's not gonna be in the high traffic times, right? It's not gonna be at the beginning of school, in the schools, it'll be right after school for extracurriculars. They may just have a bus sitting around doing nothing, you know, and during the middle of the day.
And I wouldn't think that they would require you to do that because, I mean, they're dealing with so many other school districts, they might not be able to give us a bus or a driver, depending on what they were asking for. So I really don't think it would be a problem going with somebody else for a field trip. And typically for like the eighth grade field trip, don't we hire, like sometimes, like a coach?
Yes.
Company or something, so, I mean.
Yeah, I can't see that she was gonna do that anyway, but, yeah.
Anything else on 22? 22 starts your food service, 23 is your food service.
Wasn't there a question? Did we get that question answered about the freezer? Yes, we did, right? Something about that. I can't remember.
He said that the cooler compressor was changed, not the freezer one, or vice versa?
Yeah, okay.
I did bring information on that just, Gosselin and I talked about it today, just in case there were more questions, so.
So if it costs 8,000, and I don't know anything about this, but if it costs 8,500 to repair it, what does it cost for a new walk-in freezer?
I did ask that.
Yeah.
And so basically, the way that it's situated in your building, you would have to blow out one of your walls to replace it. Okay, so just to give you an idea.
New office?
That's the kind of work. Your freezer itself is fine, like the, everything that contains it, like that is, that, from what I understand, that is in perfect condition. It's just everything, the compressor and possibly coils that just need to keep it running efficiently. I did look into the invoices. It looks like we get it serviced about every six to nine months that we pay for them to come out here and do like another quick bandage repair just to get us through another six months, so.
So this would be like an overhaul of it, except for the exterior, which is still good.
Right.
And hopefully get rid of the bandages.
Right.
Okay, on 23?
Yeah, I just have another question on that. So our proposed budget for the contracted services there is, I just wanted to look at this. It was 141-822.
Mm-hmm.
This year, amount of revenue we got for food services was 130,000. Does that mean we're, if that stays the same, I mean, do we have any guess on what the revenue will be?
Um, they're, they're, so I believe they're supposed to, according to their contract, they're supposed to cover the loss, which is what they did last year, which is why we got a big refund at the end of the year. So, I looked at their budget. I did not, I don't have a contract to go by for fiscal year, 18, 19 for them. And that's not something we address for a few more months. So I took their current contract that we have with them, which they adjusted. And I multiplied that by 5% now. And for the revenue piece of it for next year, I went off of what our actuals look like to fall more in line. So some of them I increased, some of them I decreased, some of them I left the same. Just because I don't wanna over budget, under budget. You don't wanna have to come up with that money at the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay? And I do have that information for you, so when we get there, I do have the revenues.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Did I answer your question?
It did, yeah.
Okay.
I was mostly just wanting to make sure that we were still in the right area of the amount of loss we'd expect, right? Because it looks like it's going up significantly if you just look at revenues from this year versus the service, but I don't think that's.
I think, I think when they came in, they, they thought they were gonna be able to turn the program around and get significantly more sales. And I, I know that didn't happen last year, so.
Did we have the discussion about the food services wages? I was just trying to figure out that. 2,163.75, that was the 16, 17. That was the whole school year.
Yep. And so that's pretty much your contracted person for your free and reduced lunch, for them to file that. And that was only one year that we had it, so I'm not sure how accurate those numbers are. So that's why I only budgeted six, I can reduce it if you want. I just budgeted $6,000 because the contracts, I believe, says not to exceed $6,000 for the year.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need that much in there.
Where are we this year on it? Let's look for a look. Hope we have some information.
Yeah, we agreed on that last year for.
Yeah, we did it not turkey.
And I'm not saying take it out. What I'm saying is, do we need to budget $6,000 more? I'm thinking four.
Currently, and this was run last week, the beginning of November, so $650.
Yeah.
We could probably draw.
Want to reduce it?
A lot of it's like front loaded too, isn't it?
Or even three.
You want to reduce it to three?
3,500. Reduce it to 3,500. You okay with that?
I mean, if we did last year, she worked the whole full year, right? Last year? Did we not get her to like October, November or something like that?
See, I'm not, see, my thing is, I'm not sure how last year worked because she was the food service director as well as processing the free and reduced claims. So how that time was actually separated, I'm not sure. I don't know if there was overlapping at some point, but.
I think I'd recommend we take it to 4,000 and then adjust it again next year if we need to, but one year's actual.
Like 4,000.
But we should be able to figure that out because we could, what, she did 15 hours per week or something like that? What was it?
Well, I think that, I think we, I think that's what we tried to figure, but it's usually a lot more to start with and a lot less at the end. It's not evenly balanced at 15 hours a week.
Like at the beginning of the year, it's typically more because that's when most of the forms are due by as the students are returning. So that will, so if we're reducing that line by 2,000, that will also be reducing your FICA line by $153 for $306 in that line.
306?
Yep.
Are we good on 23?
So I, I know I'm not good with math, but I'm still not understanding this. If our current budget is 140, and maybe this is what you just asked, Keith, but is 143,000, how is the current contract plus 5%? 141-822?
So.
Okay.
What?
For the contracted services, it says below it, this is the current contract plus 5%. And our current budget for 17, 18 is 143,000. And then the proposed budget is 141-822.
Because when you did your, when we budgeted last year, we didn't have a contract with them. So I estimate it to a certain point. And then last year, because they did not receive the sales as much as they did, they adjusted their contract when we got to the end of the year for you guys to sign your contract. So your current contract is actually lower than what is budgeted for.
This is more of the actuals, it's budgeted off the actuals.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I was like.
I will adjust that note for you.
Yes, please do, because I'll probably forget that by the time we get to the budget committee, but I, I know I'm not good at math, but I knew that was not plus 5%.
This is very similar to the question we had last week, last meeting with Scott, the special education.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else on 23? On page 24, we have our tuition co-brown. We've got our number, so that's gonna be adjusted. In addition to that, we have two homeschool students that were budgeted for. We've made those phone calls and one has said that they will not be enrolling next year and one we have gotten no answer for. So we're gonna budget for one homeschooler and take the other one out of the budget, so. And then adjusting that.
You have also had, in your enrollment, you've also had a decrease in your 11th grade by one student. So in your note, it says 66, that will be dropping down to 65. In your 12th grade says 76, but that will be dropping down to 75. So your total number of students is 242. And that will be multiplied by the new rate of 16,177. So your new total in that line will be 39,14834, which is a reduction of $11,732.
And again, that's something we keep an eye on right up to the day that we talk to the budget committee. If we have students moving in or moving out, we'll adjust that accordingly.
What was the rate last year?
15,560.
Take a look.
You're welcome.
Six percent every year?
No.
Nope, last year, I wanna say it was closer to 3% and next year it's going to be an increase of almost 4%, 3.97.
Need a new building.
I should run to the SAA. I want to run to the SAA.
The other number on that page, special ed tuition co-brown. 265,886, that's gonna change.
To 280,212, which is a $14,326 increase.
$1,000 decrease.
Almost canceled each other out. 3,26.
Are those numbers that you gave us for the decrease in the two students as recent as today or from a couple days ago?
I adjusted it from what is in your packet. I looked at the packet before I came today when I got the rates, so.
We're probably gonna be adjusting it again.
Just a rate until we got budget ready.
Because that's what we do.
That, that's a fluid number, yeah.
Didn't you just burst that bubble?
Yeah.
Or down or up?
Down.
Oh, okay.
Anything else on page 24? Page 25, high school transportation, first, top of the page. That's it, right?
Oh, I forgot about that. Good call. Thought it was done.
At the top of page 25, that number's gonna be 37,000. 37,800.
For a reduction of 98,338.
And again, when, when we, when we explain that, we'll try to do a corresponding note there.
I was gonna just ask, thank you, Bob.
Well, set with that because this is gonna come on you probably.
Well, you guys will be there, but.
Basically, the, the answer is, in the past, all of the routes have been built out as a bus, a separate bus. So the elementaries were a separate bus and then when those two ran the high school route, they were built out as a separate bus. Now, what they're doing is building, billing out the bus and then the high school routes are additional hours. So it's a, it's a corresponding savings. So although it looks like the, the elementary school is, is way up, we've got the corresponding savings at the high school.
So what's our overall decrease rate? Decreased 94.
I didn't do a total decrease rate, but I have a total bottom line budget is 11,824,809. which is a total decrease of $46,075. Okay. Minus 46,075.
I don't think you did that right.
No, that's, that's gotta be more now.
Was my math not right?
I don't think so.
I think the 824 is right, but the decrease is more.
No, just right.
46,075.
Okay, so we decreased the proposed budget over what's in the paper here, right? Yet our decrease.
Decreased. Yeah, we should be going.
That doesn't make sense. So maybe the math is wrong here, but, so.
We, this was our budget. We took more money off. And our decrease should be more than 48,700.
Right.
Our decrease should be.
You only calculated the total decrease from the changes that we just did. So you would add the 46,075 to.
The 48.
No, that's, that's not right either.
Oh, I see what she did.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but.
All right, 94.
So it'll be a total decrease of 94,528.94 over the current budget.
Okay. That makes more sense.
Sorry, I moved on, I'm trying to update your tax rate.
Although.
So what is our bottom line now?
824,809,09.
Nope.
Yeah, all right, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay.
Our decrease. For a total of 94,528.
Yep.
That'll change.
Everything else being equal, it's like 40 cents on the tax rate. Did my math right? But that's assuming revenues stay the same in the line.
Doubt it.
Yeah, doubt it.
All dogs, yeah.
No, because already our, which we call it's less.
A default?
No, our revenue, the state is already less.
So your percentage would be 0.
Wait, 8 something, right?
Yes, point 08. Zero.
Still a reduction.
Do you want to do the default budget or you want to go over your tax impact? So pretty much, I do. Because we just got the adequacy information yesterday. And of course, now with the changes that you just made, this will change again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Really enjoy that, Adrian. It's okay, you're welcome.
I'm learning, I'm trying to, doing my research, trying to figure this stuff out.
It's like, numbers.
Well, trust me, with all the hiccups that I've been seeing around the state this year, and the other towns, I'm a little nervous when it gets to this point myself. It's a very hard thing to calculate, because you never know exactly what you're going to get from the state. Other districts, they don't know what they're going to get for tuition. It's a very hard thing to ballpark. So, before you, I have enclosed your tax impact that I calculated before this meeting, obviously. Behind that, you will see your estimated revenues that I've calculated.
With that money, with the one from what you sent us. So the...
I don't think I sent you a revenue thing. Okay, yes, that, that I sent to the Joint Board, the adequacy aid.
Oh, that was the Joint Board.
So that's included in my estimated revenues.
Okay.
You also have a copy of what we received yesterday from the state that I forwarded to you all in regards to the adequacy aid. And behind that is how to calculate, how they calculate your adequacy aid. Okay.
Ask you a quick question on the second page.
Sure.
In the revenue, we have the surplus return to town.
Mm-hmm.
DRA estimated revenue, it's not, just not...
So I put that there, because if you look at your first column, that's the actual revenue.
Yep.
So at the end of fiscal year 16, we returned $605,000 to the town. They received that to offset your 1617 rate.
Right.
Okay, the amount of money that we returned at the end of fiscal year 1617, my report is due, so the one that we just had, that's why the report is due to the state by September 1st, because that in turn gets returned back to the town.
Mm-hmm.
So that is there to, I pretty much just put that there to let you know that's how much we had sent back.
So we send...
I don't know the town's process after it leaves my office or the state. I don't know if it's just something that just automatically gets turned over, if it's something that the selectmen vote on. I'm not sure.
But that doesn't come in as revenue?
It doesn't. But, well, technically, I believe it should. I believe it should, not as revenue, but it's there to offset the taxes.
Offset the tax.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why we never end up seeing what that number is.
Right. So for me, I just kind of put it there as like an informational purpose, because then if you look at your 1819, I don't put anything there, because I don't know where you're going to be at the end of this year. If you wanted me to estimate $300,000, I could do that, and we could estimate what the tax rate would be on top of that. But for me, I leave that blank, because I want to know the worst-case scenario of what the increase of the tax rate is. So, the actual revenues for 1617 is what we filed with the state. So that agrees to your revenue page and what was sent in. Your DRA estimated revenue, I put that in there as a DRA estimated revenue, because that's the paperwork that I filed with the state. That is what we finalized within the past month, saying, okay, this is what we're expecting to receive for revenue, but we don't know if we're going to meet that or not. And then using those two figures is how I come up with the 1819. I did meet with your Special Education Department, and that's how we came up with the catastrophic aid, as well as your Medicaid reimbursements. Your child nutrition, if you look at your 1617 actuals, we've only received $2,200 that year. This year, we, I was assuming 3,000. And so now I'm dumbing it, not dumbing it down, but now I'm decreasing it by $2,500. Same thing with your federal child nutrition, under your school lunch special milk. I'm reducing that by $2,000. Medicaid is being reduced by $20,000. I'm increasing your interest income, based on prior year actuals, by $1,000. Your school lunch, I'm leaving the same, because 1617, it came in pretty accurate. $24,000 is the other local rent, which is typically your preschool and any other thing that you rent the building out for. So you can see right there that there's a reduction of $800 that I'm expecting to receive between those sources. If you look further down at the adequacy aid, which is in that packet that I handed out to you, they estimate, and again, theirs is just an estimation. If you look on page 1204, I highlighted it for everybody to look at, they're estimating it to be 2,283,964. I believe they at least have to give us 95% of that, so I have only budgeted for 95% of that. But it's not guaranteed. If you look at the line at the column 1, 2, 3, 4 before that, that is your local education. So we're expecting to, that, I believe they have to give us, is $1,630,000. And that's where those figures come from for your revenue page. And then the difference is the total between your total budget less all of that. So if you go back to your first page, that's where that basically breaks that all down with your 15, 16, 17 school rates, to see how that has either gone up or down within the past few years. Your, I don't know if you want to get your pens and start changing the numbers, but I will update it at the office. So your 1819 school board budget for draft 1, that is now going to say draft 2, and that will be for 11,824,809. And with all of those changes, it has now gone from a 53 cent per thousand increase to a 43 cent estimate.
That's assuming that there's no surplus return.
Correct.
So what'd you say, 42 cents? 43.
43 cents.
Any questions? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean...
I know it's a lot to take in. Again, we just got the figures yesterday. If I could get this information to you sooner, as we start developing the budget, I would. I did email them earlier this week about it, I believe Monday or Tuesday. And they told me by law, it has to be issued by the 15th. So now that I know that, I will make sure that as soon as 15th comes, we have it in hand.
I have a question on the second page. Surplus return to town, 605,691, was 1617. So on the year that ended June 30th of 2017, how much money was left over from that year?
158,705.
So I'm just trying to figure out why it says 1718.
Yeah, I think it should be 15, 16, 17.
Well, it's revenue for 1718 is what it is.
Oh, because you have to...
We have to understand, the town's on a different tax calendar year than we are. So that's the only reason why I'm putting it that way. So our ending fiscal year 1617, we returned 158,705, but that does not get taken into account until right now. So the same thing that...
Well, that's what I'm trying to drive at. It's my understanding, and I agree with everybody that says this is all very confusing, but it's my understanding that the tax rate in town that just came out is based on the 158,705.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. You're welcome.
Do you know what the estimated tax rate for 18 would be if it was the default budget?
Do you want to go over the default budget?
We have to do that first.
For the most part, so basically, pretty much the same changes that you made in this budget now have to be made in your default budget as well. Bob and I went over that today before we came in.
So I can give you a quick estimate, right? This is what the DRA says to do, is to take the total valuation of the town and divide it by 1,000, right? And that's how much a $1 tax rate is, right? So the valuation of our town right now is around 480 million, right? So it means you divide that by 1,000. It's 480,000. So if the budget goes up by 480,000, the tax rate would go up by $1. Goes down by 480,000, there's going to be down by $1, right? So every, about every 50,000 is 10 cents. So when you look at the default budget, the default budget is what? Like 10,000, I mean 100,000 less than our current budget? That's two dimes less, right? So 2 cents.
Estimate.
That's all this ballpark estimate type stuff. But that's how they say to do it, and it seems to work out that way.
Do you want us to take you quickly through the default? I mean, I can do it a lot quicker than the budget, because there's fewer lines to release.
Because I think there are a couple of things that Bob and I thought about today that probably need your discussion. Your fuel oil line. Is it the board? Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Another question on this, sorry, just to continue things. So in this worksheet page you gave us, the second page?
Yep.
Right? The district assessment, at the bottom there.
Mm-hmm.
Plus the education tax. No, that's not right. My question is, the surplus return to town, I guess, is that added into our revenue directly?
No.
Okay, not in this column at all either?
No, so...
Okay. So this is just a separate kind of, it's just information at the top?
Correct.
Okay. So where does that come in then, in here? We don't know?
It doesn't. For me, it was just informational. Pretty much, if you look at your total operating appropriation down at the bottom, that just, I make sure that that agrees to your revenue page. And the same thing, because I got this last minute, I would typically try to do the same thing in your total operating, but I did not double-check that figure today. I didn't have enough time. So those are a few things.
So this isn't the district assessment, plus the total revenue, plus adequacy grant, or something like that? Would it be though, is that what the...
What was your question?
So the total operating appropriation, say for the 1617, right? Should that be the sum of the district assessment line? The adequacy grant and the total revenue line? And revenue from local sources, or? No, be total revenue, right? I don't think it adds, it probably doesn't add up, because we don't have the building aid in here, for instance, right? Or the cash drop.
Well, you're not getting your building aid this year. That was one of the things I reported about.
I understand that, but we did in 2016, 17, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So the 11,748 just agrees to your estimated revenue. And like I said, I would have to, it says your total operating appropriation. Whether or not that agrees to your total financial statements, I'm not sure. I would have to double-check.
What I'm looking for, I guess, is the formula for, to get from our total operating appropriation, right? To our district assessment.
Right.
You know, that's what I'm interested in.
Yep.
So maybe we can just meet, I can talk to you offline, and then we can walk me through that.
Sure.
Because I mean, the revenue's part of that, obviously.
Right.
The surplus gets in there somehow, right?
Correct.
And that's what I don't know, what I'm trying to figure out.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay. All right, so I'm all set with this then. Anybody else has any questions on the tax rate stuff, or?
I just have a question. Where does this grade three reading differentiated aid come in? Did we get that? Because it's like $9,248, no? Yeah? It's highlighted?
It's an offline question.
Well, it's highlighted, so, and I had seen it earlier, but I didn't know if it was in this page. Is it like...
Sorry.
Sorry. Page 5?
Page 514 of the adequacy aid paperwork.
That's a question.
Where does it fall, like, does it, shouldn't it be, is it in the revenue?
Yes, right? But we don't have a revenue, we don't have an estimated revenue page for proposed budget.
Or is it, like, is it part of, like, this? I mean, like, does it fall in?
Like, I'm not 100% positive, but the, so I only focus on two numbers when I look at this, because those are the numbers that I need to budget off of. And that is the local education, the education money that you get, as well as your adequacy money. But I believe everything else before that is what is used to calculate that.
To calculate your adequacy money.
Right.
Okay, so this isn't a money on top of that, okay. I think that's...
And that's what this explains, like, I read this.
Okay.
That's how you get to your adequacy money.
Okay, because of the grade three reading differentiated aid. I guess when I saw that aid or whatever, I think I looked at it as a...
No, if you read how to get to it, that it explains how to get to the adequacy.
Down here, the fiscal year 1819, it tells you how much money you get for all of those.
I think I read that quick, and that's, okay, sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
All right, default budget?
All right, like I said, there's not a lot of lines that need discussion in here, so I'm just going to go to the ones that we need, and stop me at any point. So the first one we're going to look at is on page 3, right at the top, special ed preschool. Again, that's going to be changed as soon as we get to the Joint Board meeting. The next one to look at is on page 9, SAU 44. That number, again, is going to be developed at the Joint Board. On page 10, we had a discussion about the fuel oil and what to do with it. If it's a contractual obligation that's in place, then you represent that number. If not, it's the, as it was budgeted last year. I don't know what to do with the oil. We put $55,000 in our budget as a marker. Technically, we don't have a contract yet. Do you think we should put 55,000 in there, or should we leave it at 46,800?
I think if we increased it in the operating budget.
Typically, we would, if we were locked into a contract, I would say, we've got a contract, we put it in.
So we just leave it for now until we get a contract? We're supposed to get it for what, the next couple of weeks?
Well...
There's a guaranteeing it.
They don't know when they're going to be able to provide it.
So...
Read the law, the law says contract. We don't have a contract, it should be the 46.
We don't have a contract.
Till we get a contract, we can do it.
Okay, we'll leave that at 46,800. Page 11.
We don't have a contract for 48, so I guess we should put it at 0.
No, it stays as was budgeted.
I'm just saying, we don't have a contract.
I can count to 0.
I'd rather not do that. On page 11, elementary school transportation, again, that number's going to be 315, 315,900. On page 14, tuition co-brown is going to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, 3,914,834.
39,14834.
That's what you said.
Down a little bit, special ed tuition co-brown, that 265,886 is going to change to 280,212. High school transportation, the 136,138 is going to change to 37,800. And those are the changes that we had for the default.
Are you giving us a new number? Okay. I thought so, I just wanted to make sure. You're banking or something?
I'm balancing my checkbook too.
What was that again?
Estimated tax impact would be 17 cents per thousand. Maybe a little error, but...
All right. 17, you're saying, 17 from this year or 17 difference from the proposed budget?
17 from this year.
From this year.
So we will, obviously...
This year's? This year's tax rate?
Well, no. I know what this year's tax rate is, but you're saying this year, so we don't know what this year's tax rate will be. 1718 year.
No, we don't know what that is. I'm going over what the current year is.
So we'll make those adjustments. I guess the next thing, we'll go on to the warrant articles, but I guess the next thing the board needs to do is decide when you want to finalize this number. We'll, we'll have the preschool, we'll have the SAU number on November 27. We need to finalize the budget binders. Did I say February? Sorry.
Did you?
I think I did. November 27. And we need to finalize the binders to get them to the budget committee. We're going to finish those on December 1st, that Friday, to get them over to the budget committee on the 2nd, and our presentation is on the night, so. Does the board want to meet on the, like, that Tuesday, the 28th? Or how do you want to finalize your number?
November 28th.
Yeah.
When's our next board meeting?
Next board meeting is after December...
Not until the week after.
December 7th.
So who's next to me?
I will be available, but I think you guys can meet and finalize those numbers. As many people here.
I mean, the other option is, we could put those two numbers in, run the, run the budget, and if, if you wanted to meet the morning of the presentation on the 9th, and just do a quick vote.
December 9th?
You could, you could, you could do that, too.
I don't like that idea.
Shown out options.
I like the 28th. You said you can't do the 28th?
I can't do the 28th, but you guys can, if you guys can go for it.
It's really just those two numbers unless you want something else adjusted in the budget.
So December 9th is our presentation?
December 9th is the presentation. December, we're, we're putting the final touches on the binders on the 1st, which is a Friday, and getting them to the budget committee on the 2nd.
Wait, you guys decide, because I don't...
Are you going the whole week?
Yeah. I can come do it on the 9th.
I mean, the other thing you could do is, on November 27, we have a joint board meeting. We could post it as a Northwood board meeting, and you could literally meet for five minutes afterwards and approve it.
I'd like that to be the way to go, but...
You'd have the number. We would just have to...
Not good.
We'd have to pump those two numbers in really quickly, and, I mean, it would be better if you could do it on Tuesday, that would give us, I just volunteered Marjorie for five minutes.
I'm, I'm fine with Tuesday. Are you good with Tuesday?
As long as it's, like, at 6:30. If I can't.
Don't care?
Yeah.
6:30 is.
So November 28, 6:30, quick meeting, finalize budget. The warrant articles start on page 72. Again, Article 2 is, is not something you're going to be able to vote on tonight, because you obviously don't have a number. So in, in the past, what we've done is, once we get the final number on that, you can do a vote, actually, at the, at that meeting on the, on the 28th.
So back to Article 1, though? Do we, we don't elect a school district moderator, do we? Use the town moderator for that? We don't have a moderator?
Yeah, the town and the school is the same person. Don't we, actually, we, don't we rent them or pay them?
Rent a moderator?
Yeah, we pay them. Rent them for the three hours or four hours.
It's like the $300, it's not much.
Yeah. Right.
I don't know. I'll check.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we, I don't remember.
Yeah, we don't have a school district moderator.
And the clerk and the treasurer are both up?
As far as I know.
No, I didn't know that, that's why I was...
All right. Back on Article 2.
Yep.
Did you, Ms. Whitmore, did you look into whether or not we can put the default budget?
I did not. I apologize. Typically, once this is done, I, I have to upload it to their portal, but I can try to contact her. My apologies, Keith.
So the default budget what?
So I think at the last meeting, maybe we weren't here for this, I was asking if it was possible for us to put a tax, tax impact if this article passes, and the tax impact if the article fails? What the tax impact would be in both, in both cases?
All right, on 2. Article 3, as it's in here, is your high school tuition capital reserve. You can see that we've got about 158,000 in there. Since the beginning, the, the conversation I recall from the school board has been that you, you've wanted 10 tuitions in there. At 161, at, excuse me, 16,177, that's $161,000, so...
Covers 9.78.
You're very close to that. So if you'd like, we could take Article 3 out for this year.
I think so.
But we're short by how much?
About $3,000.
3,000, yeah.
The next one is your building capital improvement reserve. You can see you've got $101,000 in there. I was trying to find some history on that, and I'm not, I couldn't find a, a cap or what we were...
We wanted 100,000.
We wanted 100,000.
Is that what it was? I couldn't find that.
No, I think everything we talked about last year, we got to the point where we wanted it to be a...
Just about, yeah.
So...
Take both of these.
Well, except that we're probably likely to dip into this one, you know, before the election time, right? If we do use it for the lockers and, you know, for the stairs.
That will make a difference on how I vote as a school board member and how they vote as a taxpayer in this town. So if, if we agree, for instance, to repair the stairs before we vote in marks, then I would want to add some money to that. But if we're not going to do that, then I don't. So, I mean, that's, that's, I'd like to know, really, before we even go to the budget committee, what we're going to do, whether we are going to do the lockers and do the...
Well, I thought we already agreed that we were doing them, it's just a matter of how much. Well, I thought it, well, I think we're bringing...
We never finalized that decision.
Oh, okay.
We didn't finalize, but I, I mean, to me, the lockers and the 8,500 or whatever it is with the two repairs.
Yeah. I thought we had finalized that we're doing it, we just wanted more information.
Then I would like to do a warrant article. And if, if it's iffy, then I don't want to do it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Only one.
Well, in that case, we should raise it to 25,000 if we're going to do both.
I don't think so. I think 10 would be fine, just to, that's my opinion. I think 10 would be fine, and then, you know, go from there.
The other thing we could do is, we could actually make a decision now on what we're going to do with the lockers and the stairs.
I'm for the stairs and lockers, I've said that from the beginning.
I'm in favor of doing the lockers and the stairs.
Yeah.
I just feel that we could wait till the next meeting on the lockers.
That's true, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm not in favor of putting 136 inch, 136 lockers for less than 100 kids. I, I am very much in favor if we could do both the sixth, seventh, and eighth, or not both, but all three, for around the same more, same money or a little more, I'd be very much in favor of that.
So let's say if we ballpark estimate that to be, what, 20, 25,000 for lockers?
28, I thought.
28?
It's in the high 20s.
It was 23 as presented.
23 as presented.
And then, so Michael, we're down depending on what we do for lockers. Say, say around 20, and then the stairs was about 9,000.
8,500.
So you're looking at about, about 30,000 we would drain from this, right? So our balance would go down to about 70,000. So to put 10...
So let's go for 15.
Put 15 in?
I'd, I'd be agreeable to 15 if we're going to do that.
So it gives us like halfway back there.
We're going to get us back.
Let's take a 10, but...
10 for three years, but...
And that's fine, too. I, I'm not going to sit here and argue about 5,000. It's more the idea than the money to me.
So what would you like?
You bid us 10,000.
I think 10 for three.
10 then? I can go either way.
10 for 5,000 dollars or something. That's fine.
10 then?
Do you want to vote on this warrant article, or, well, you've got five people here? We can vote, we can vote on the, like, the, the budget warrant article at, at your next meeting, but you're not going to have everybody there. So do you want to weigh in on the ones you know now?
Yep, sure.
Okay. Motion to...
Recommend.
Recommend Article 4 to raise, well, Article, whatever it is. Raise the appropriate sum of 10,000 dollars to put in the capital, building capital improvement, capital reserve fund for the purpose of financing all capital improvements.
Check it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of recommending this warrant article?
Aye.
Aye. And the next article is your special ed capital reserve. You can see you've got 100,872. In the minutes of, of past board meetings, $100,000 was kind of the, what was, what was thought to be the cap. I asked Mr. Rooney this afternoon what he thought would, would be an acceptable cap, and he agreed with 100,000, so you're there.
Okay.
And if there's any others that...
I, well, we had talked about at the last meeting about the, what you call it, ground maintenance or something like that? Because I had talked about starting or trying to do an article to put a small amount in, like, I don't know, maybe it was after you left him, I don't know. Either 5 or 10,000 dollars from surplus to replace the sign out front, to start small and to work up to replacing the sign. Have you been through Candia?
Yeah, it's not nice.
Yeah, that sign that they have out front now. It's, Bob thought they paid like around 30,000 dollars for that or something.
Yeah, don't quote me on that.
Well, yeah. But, you know, I'm not looking for something like up at Co-Brown. We don't need anything big and like that, but something that the letters don't fall off all the time and...
Yeah, I think the basic idea though is... The warrant article to change the function of the 15 or whatever it is, grant matching to the, to a sign.
Oh, that's true, there's 15 in that. Oh, we still need more in it, but yeah, change that. Well, you'd have to do two separate, right?
Well, I'm...
I'm not talking about the logistics.
You're talking about the sign, but the, what we kind of settled on, I thought, too, was that to have a capital improvement, not capital improvement reserve, a reserve fund for building and grounds improvements.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Just like, just like we have one for capital improvements.
Right.
Right? Because we can't use capital improvements for building and ground, and whether to sign now, and it could be whatever, replace it, getting the ball field into shape later.
Playground.
Playground stuff, you know? So, so I think having, starting a new capital reserve fund for that, for the purpose of grounds.
Building grounds improvement.
But what were you saying about the grant? Just changing the name of that to the capital reserve for maintenance, you mean? Okay.
The town did that a couple of years ago, where they had some money in one account, they weren't going to use it, so they, what did you do with the police? What was that?
I thought the police did.
Yeah. And so they, they, they just asked the people if we could change the name and the use from this to that. So then you would, and, and assumingly, that's no impact, because we're just moving, changing the name, they would approve that. Then you would have, I think it's 15, I'm just...
I think that's what we had in there.
Then you would have 15,000 dollars to start your capital improvement grounds plan.
So then there would be two articles, though, because one would be to change the name and then two...
I, I don't remember the logistics.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, if you wanted to add more money to it...
That's what I mean, is if I wanted to say, can we take 10,000 dollars from surplus if we have it, that's two articles.
Yes, if you want to add money.
Yeah.
I, you know, I think if we started with 15, that would be wonderful, and next year add some money, but that's me.
I'm not a big fan of ditching our grant fund, though, or matching grant funds. If we do end up coming across a grant, we can use, you know?
Doesn't seem fair to leave it sit there if we're not going to use it. I don't...
We should use it.
I don't have anybody to go looking for grants and stuff that, you know, that's the hardest part.
Can we get some verbiage for the next meeting?
Yep.
What's your, what are you trying? Are you going to switch it, or are you going to create one? What do you, what do you want to do?
Both? See what we like best.
I like the idea of switching it. It's there. We've already, we've already, the taxpayers have already given us the money, they can decide if they want to switch the, the reasoning for it. And then I would like to, if the board is agreeable, I would like to ask for even just another 5,000 dollars to put into it from...
Surplus.
Surplus, thank you.
There's 20 in there now.
Oh, there's 20 in there now?
There's 20 in there now.
Oh, I thought it was 15.
I'm, I'm hearing two people say switch it. Do, do, do you want me to switch it or not?
Switch it.
Four. Got it. I'll get that, I'll get that.
Now, what's going to happen if they approve putting...
So that's the tricky part.
You give 5,000 dollars into the capital...
I'll find it.
5,000 has to be from the original writing, and then underneath that, you do the change of the verbiage, so you get that money. I say you don't ask for any money, you just take it and try to change the...
That's what I'm saying, yeah, because I think it's going to be too complicated if you're trying to vote at the same time. Because then what if, what gets voted down, the changing it gets voted down, and then this, the other one passes, then what, what happens then?
You have 5,000 dollars in a fund.
If the first one got voted down, then the, the second one would be, you wouldn't really vote on it. Because you wouldn't have anywhere to put it.
Right, right. There'd be no fund. Okay, well, if that's okay, then I'm okay with that, doing that.
I'm not advocating. I think twenty thousand is a good start, but you could say that, you could have a warrant article for to start this fund for five thousand dollars. And then the second warrant article underneath of it, you could ask the town to allow you to take the money from this fund and put it to the fund that they just approved up above.
I think you'd do it the other way around, Tim. I think.
Whatever.
I think that the matching grant one, the first warrant, I think, and I'll check this with legal, but I think the first one would be switching it from the matching grant to the grounds maintenance.
It may be. I would go back and look at the year that they did it. I know it was a police issue, you know, and see how they did it. It worked, whatever they did.
I'll find out. So, all right, we're going to switch it. What's the board want to do with adding more to it? Yes or no?
No.
Twenty thousand is a good start, and then ask for more action.
This is just twenty thousand.
All right. Okay, I'll get that one together, then.
So it appears to me that one of the school districts in our, in our little SAU has a constant problem on what they can and can't spend some of their accrued monies on because certain people in the town keep giving them a bad time and say it can't, so I, whatever we do, I would really like some good wording and a discussion so that we can always go back and say, this is what the board discussed as to what that fund would be for. So I've heard a sign and grounds and playground, and I think somehow that should all be included in the warrant article to an extent that people understand what we want that money for.
Even if we use the word, et cetera.
Very much in favor of the money. I just would really like it clear and concise what that money's for, so that in two or three years or five years, when some of us aren't here, it's still clear what the money was meant for. I think that's the problem that I've seen over the years with certain warrant articles. And I don't, you know, we could ask legal, you could explain how, you know, what we're trying to do, but, so that we could kind of encompass the grounds. I mean, it's.
Yeah, Nottingham did something like this. They wanted them, they started the creation of the, of the building grounds maintenance for the playground.
Right.
But they wanted the flexibility of, if they didn't utilize all of it, that they could use it for a ball field, or they could use it for a front walkway or something like that. So that's why they wanted that flexibility in the wording.
And I think we would want the flexibility.
Right, I agree.
Can't we put something like anything to do with the upkeep or maintenance or improvement of the exterior of the building?
It'd be more improvement, right? It wouldn't be upkeep, right? We'd budget for that.
I think improvement. I mean, we've talked about three different items, and I agree with those, and I don't know if there's any more, but ball fields, playground, and sign.
And bouncy house.
That's in the CIP.
I mean, it just, you know, at the last Kitter Log, then they talked about this, and they, you know, they said, you know, if you put in a warrant article for a soccer field, and then something happens, so you want to use the money for a baseball field, you can't. You know, because of the way the, you know, and they gave specific warrant articles at that little seminar and talked about, you know, how you need to make the warrant articles. They need to say what you mean and mean what you say. But they don't have to be so exact, et cetera, so because you're always going to find somebody that will find fault with your wording and try to say, you know, you can't spend money on that because it didn't say that. So I just think we need some.
It's just the exterior improvement of the.
Yeah, I think I understand what you're trying to do, so I'll get legal guidance and try to make it all encompassing, so we don't get pigeonholed.
Can you guarantee that?
I said try.
All right, we all set with the warrant articles in?
Yep.
It's getting late. Let's move on. Any committee reports? We have no new business other than this stuff, so. Committee reports, strategic planning. We are planning a community outreach. What's the right word for that? Community outreach meeting?
Forum.
Forum for November thirtieth. Do that, that's, that's going to be at Co-Brown, at the cafeteria in the Science Building. So please spread the word on that, get people to come there. We're going to have questions. We'll be looking for feedback on. Any other committees meet in any time? Okay. Did you want to give a quick recap of the Co-Brown Joint Board Committee? How many people were there?
The joint board, ten Co-Brown met, and they went over the senior experience, everything from what the seniors expect, the courses they take, what they do for helping the students do something after graduation. They're working really hard to not only get kids into four-year schools, two-year schools, vocational schools, into the military. Their goal is to make sure that a hundred percent of the students have something, a plan, after they graduate, so they're moving forward. So they spoke about that quite a bit, and they spoke about transitions a bit, and the Bridges Program, which is the curriculum meetings with all of our schools in the SAU, as well as Co-Brown, in trying to get consistency from the K-eight level up through the high school. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thanks. I was there, too. I didn't feel like talking about it.
Thank you.
Any other committees? No. Budget time. Old business, our superintendent evaluation. I assume we can go into non-public to do that. That's what I'm going to do right now. Parking lot items. We have the tractor. Competency presentation in January, and school board newsletter, which is ongoing timeframe, which we still haven't done yet. This might be, we might want to get through budgeting first and re-attack that later. And there's nothing interesting in the school board timeline either, but budgeting. Future agenda items, we will finalize our discussion on the lockers and the stairs. Figure out what we're going to do there, make a decision. It'll be on our agenda. I guess before that, though, we'll have, we have a meeting on the twenty eighth.
Tuesday at six thirty?
Tuesday, six thirty here. Is that right?
Twenty eighth, yeah.
On the twenty eighth. Let's add that. Oh, we only add that. Before that, we have a joint board meeting on the twenty-seventh at the SAU office.
No, is this a special meeting, five, ten minutes, right?
Yeah.
Have it at the SAU.
You want to have it at the SAU?
Yeah. So have it at the SAU.
Tell us the S U before.
It'll be quick.
Okay, with you guys, that's fine.
Sure.
So November twenty-eighth meeting will be at the SAU at six P M. Six P M? Six thirty P M?
Six thirty.
Six thirty P M. Special meeting. To finalize the proposed budget. Our next meeting is December seventh, and then again on the twenty-first. So I skipped over quickly setting future agenda items. Anyone have any agenda items they want to add to either of those meetings? Seeing none. Closing public comment. Anybody like to take this opportunity to address the board? Any board members like to do the same? Okay, we'll close the public comment session. We do have a non-public session to do. So I will move that we go into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three.
Second.
Part two.
Oh, one other thing? Sorry?
Hold on. Deliberate session? Oh, don't let anyone know.
No, you've got a set date.
Oh, that's right. Before we do that, I'm sorry. All right, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
We do need, we've promised this, we do need to set a date for our deliberative session. What are the timeframes?
It has to be between February third and February tenth. February third is a Saturday, February tenth is a Saturday. It has to be in between.
February fourth at six fifteen at night, right there at the Super Bowl.
Do we know when the town's doing this? Anybody know?
It's on Saturday.
Third or the tenth?
Third or the tenth. Oh, she's looking.
Now, does our snow day probably fit into that?
Yes.
They're doing the third? Friday?
Do the Friday.
Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
So the third is Saturday. We did ours last time on a, at night, right?
Yeah.
It was evening on a Monday, wasn't it?
Maybe we could get some Co-Brown kids to.
Well, I'd rather do it during the day. Like, I'd rather do it on the fourth than do it on Sunday.
But Super Bowl's.
It's Super Bowl Sunday.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, what time is Super Bowl? Super Bowl's like four.
Yeah, I know, I'm cooking all day, though.
I don't want to do it in the evening, do you?
And Thursday before, too.
I like Monday night and then snow day, Wednesday or Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
I've got Nottingham deliberative on Tuesday.
And there's snow day this Friday.
Snow day's on Friday, so.
So we just waited Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday would work. Monday the fifth.
What, your meetings? No, you come to our meetings.
Yes, sir.
February, okay. February eighth, it's snow day.
Saturday?
So is that what we're going to do then?
Time?
So.
What time?
What time is this at Kohls?
February five.
I can't guarantee it.
The time was, I mean, the town's in the morning, right, at nine?
Would you say five and eight, Keith?
We could do it Saturday afternoon.
And what time?
The town usually goes into the afternoon.
Uh, six?
I'll say six.
Six?
I'll say six.
Six on Monday? Is that what it says?
Six o'clock.
Well, if it's going to go long, then it's going to be too late for people to stay, too, so. I'd rather err on the early side. Because they do tend to go long. So I'd go for six. Now, what do you guys say?
Nothing, I'm good.
Six, six thirty? We need to decide.
What, six works for me?
Six?
Six.
Six thirty.
Okay.
We'll go six. On both days, isn't that true? Okay.
That's it, sorry.
All right.
I forgot all about that.
All right, so I will again move to go into non-public under. RSA ninety-one eight colon three, part C. We'll call it in, Mr. Wells. Mr. Harper.
Yes.
McQuiggin's a yes. Ms. Hunter. Andrew.
Yes.
All right.